Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, next is our Audience of Citizens. Before we make public comment, I'm going to read off this statement. "This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board state their name and municipality. Members of the Audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. As a reminder, the Audience of Citizens portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters which are or may come before the Board. It is not designed for debate or discussion with the Board. When appropriate, individual School Board Directors may choose to respond to public comments that have been made once the Audience of Citizens period has concluded, or request that a member of the Administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting." And this is in reference to Board Policy 903. So, the first person that signed up to speak tonight is Mr. Reinhardt. Mr. Reinhardt, if you're here, now would be your time.
Excuse me, Stephen Reinhardt, Lansdale Borough. Good evening, members of the Board. I had written something to read tonight, but after careful consideration, I decided it would be not quite dignified to read in public. Instead, I should like to first congratulate Dr. Bauer on his appointment. I think he has all of the qualities necessary to lead this Board, or to lead this district in the future. I should also like to thank the Board for their wisdom in choosing Dr. Bauer. On the other topics, I have been told more than once by four Board members that this is a responsive Board. It's time to prove it. Those Board members whom I, excuse me, wrong page. Picked up this thing. I should also like to simply address the Board as a whole with some individual acknowledgements. Mr. Fusco, I want to thank you for your thoughtful, considered, and detailed reply to my question. I appreciate it. I do not see Mrs. Ramich. Okay. Mr. Casa. I was worried because I hadn't heard from you, but I do appreciate your continued support and attention to matters of, especially, school safety that we've talked about, you know, the traffic in Pendale, et cetera. Mr. Rush. I deeply respect your commitment to this district. I'm disappointed, however, that you have not chosen to respond to my emails for nearly four months. No, I can't get the page. Okay, those Board members whom I didn't mention have never responded to any communication that I have sent, not one. President Stoll. We had what I thought was a good, open communication channel. I am still unsure as to why you decided to close it. I regret my error in judgment in passively referring to you as President Snow. That was wrong. I have apologized for this previously, and for the record, I don't think you're a Nazi either, and I never called you one or implied it. Please discontinue the unstated Board policy of, quote, "If they're not with us 100 percent, they're against us." And responding to that kind of statement with less than meets static, I just don't know. Thank you. Good night.
President Stoll, if I may, my understanding is that Director Ramich is here, attending via phone, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
I just wanted to put that on the record before we move to the next speaker.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time?
Hello, Pauline Braccio, Towneensen Township. How you doing tonight? Unlike the previous gentleman, you have responded, some of you, to my email. Regrettably, I don't understand why you guys don't understand what I wrote, because I get these responses that have nothing to do with what I wrote. And then, well, not nothing to do, but just a total misunderstanding. For instance, when I talked about the police should have a SWAT, every police department should have a SWAT team in case there is a shooting at a school, and I think Christian took it as I meant to have SWAT here all the time. No, that's not what I meant. I meant there should be SWAT to come in if there is a shooter, an active shooter, in a school, because they would have the equipment, they would have the training, and they would be able to confront the shooter much more quickly than what we saw at Parkland or, more recently, Uvalde. I am appreciative of the police work that they do. I just wish they had better training, because if somebody is trained well enough, then they can put their, maybe, they could put their normal fears aside if they're just trained. I know that's what they do in boot camp in the military. They break it down, they train you up, and then you are basically programmed. And I think that's what needs to be done with the police, especially in a situation where there is an attacker. I'd like to, Wanda, you wrote me this email that was basically scolding me, and you know what? I had to laugh, because I'm not doing what you said. I did not attack anyone in my emails, and I have not insulted anyone. I know that Christian took some things as an insult, but no, that is not what I was doing. I was trying to inform and suggest. And you, Wanda, said that you have, that various people have responded with logical and/or reasonable explanations, and my last response was, I have not received anything that was logical or reasonable. Saying that pornographic material from the live areas is a slippery slope is, to me, a cop-out. Either you're going to take a stand against pornography, or you're not, and you have chosen not to. And Tina, I asked you specifically, specifically, what is your opinion? I sent you the excerpt, I sent you the source, and you never did respond to my questions. I want to know. So, okay, so what do you said, you told me in your email to send you a specific example, and I did exactly that, and you did not respond to it. So, I still don't know what your opinion is about pornography in the schools or that particular book. So, it's very disappointing that, you know, I was happy to get responses, but it was very disappointing that the responses weren't even directed towards what I was actually talking about. I know you are loath to answer anything, and answering and speaking about what I'm saying now after I've spoken is another form of cowardice, because if you can't talk to me while I can still answer you, well, then all you're doing is just acting like a coward. Thank you.
Mrs. Braccio, two things. First of all, I'll remind you then in the statement that it is not a time for debate and, you know, back and forth between the Board and the people speaking in public comment. That's number one. And number two, I call you, Mrs. Braccio, I would appreciate the same respect back for me, for Dr. Lewis Campbell, for Mr. Fusco, okay, and all the rest of the people on the Board. All right? Thank you. Missus Braccio, your time is up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak right now? Mrs. Braccio, please have a seat. Doesn't work that way. Mr. Lanier, did you want to speak?
I will answer that in my next question.
Okay.
Jason Lanier, Lansdale. I wanted to kind of springboard from what Ms. Braccio was saying about reasonable. We were told by Mr. Summers that you guys are allowed to set rules based upon being, the School Board of Directors may adopt reasonable rules and regulations for its government and control. So, let's go over what's reasonable. Is pornographic material reasonable? Because I have a list of books that must be 15 or 20 that are digitally accessible, which is interesting. You guys are going to be passing a policy about not allowing pornography on Chromebooks. I'm all for it. Chromebooks lock things down, kids can't get anywhere. That's fantastic. Unless, you know what? Unless they go to the school library. That's right, parents. Unless they go to the school library, they can get pornographic material. These books are sexually explicit, salacious, ridiculously detailed encounters. I do not understand why, what educational value do they provide? And are they reasonable? Could any of you tell me, are they reasonable? Well, let's go on to the next reasonable policy, the equity policy. Again, this is not something that's in the school code. This is something that's adopted from the NSBA, I guess it was. Is equity reasonable? Yeah? Is equity critical race theory? Because when I read what your professional development speakers write about, it's often, it looks much like critical race theory. Now, again, this is, I'm not saying that you're teaching graduate-level course in critical race theory. What I'm saying is you're implementing the tenants of critical race theory to teach kids and divide kids and to set your academic performance standards. I mentioned in one of the meetings that you guys are lowering standards in all the junior high schools. You've lowered the standards so that you increase the number of kids in the National Junior Honor Society. Is that a benefit to whom? A lower hurdle makes a kid more productive, more improved? I said that in one of the schools that you guys actually said you were going to level up students. Dr. Bauer mentioned that that must have meant understand something, so I went back and looked at the Hatfield presentation, ECI presentation, on February 1st, 2002. I can read you it, says, "Given our 2021 fall baseline, we will level up Black and Hispanic students for the fourth edition of assessments, May-June 2022." I don't know if that happens, happened, but that seems like you're dividing kids based upon race.
Mr. Lanier, your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Monticelli, or Mr. Krainy, what name are we going by tonight?
No, no comment tonight.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? All right, we'll move on then. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the July 21st, 2022 action meeting and the August 9th, 2022 work session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. G. and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the committee reports. First up is Personnel, and the Personnel Committee did not meet in August.
Excuse me, Doc, Mrs. Stoll, did we approve both meeting minutes, July 21st and August 9th?
Yes, that was what the motion was.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, the next committee report would be Finance, please, Mr. Fusco.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did not meet in August. In September, the Committee is scheduled to meet on September 6th at 6:00 PM. The meeting will be held in person at a location to be determined. End of report.
Thank you. Safe Schools, Mr. Casa.
Thank you, Madam President. The Safe Schools Committee met on Monday evening, July 25th. Mr. Durr and Coordination, Coordinator of Transportation, Mr. Dennis Ryan, shared information about Bus Patrol, an automated stop-arm enforcement technology designed to increase student safety. The system is quickly becoming popular among school districts in Pennsylvania, with several local districts already participating. A meeting is scheduled with local police chiefs and representatives from Bus Patrol to review the steps required to bring the program to North Penn. Mr. Durr then reviewed the findings of the District-wide School Safety and Security Program Assessment performed by Mark Olushealy and Associates this spring. Board members were provided with the full 93-page report and briefed by Mark Olushealy in executive session. A summary of the report is posted online for members of the public to review. Mr. Durr also reviewed his annual report to the Board of Directors, including 2021 through 2022 school year data, notable projects, and goals for the future. The report is also posted for review. Finally, Mr. Durr provided details of Act 55, which was recently signed by Governor Wolf. Act 55 made modifications to the school code, which specifically include additional training requirements for all staff, as well as grant funding for physical security and mental health projects. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 30th at 5:45 PM, virtually. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee Report. Dr. G., please.
On Wednesday, August 17th, the ECI Committee meeting met, Committee met at 4:30 in a virtual format. At that meeting, an update regarding assessments for the 2022-23 school year and student travel were presented to the Committee. The next meeting of the ECI Committee will be held on Tuesday, September 13th at 6:00 PM in a virtual format.
Thank you, Dr. G. Next committee report is Policy. Mr. Rush, please. Mr. Rush, do you have your mic on? Sorry.
This is the update from the regular policy meeting of August 9th, 2022. The Policy Committee met on August 9th, 2022 in a virtual format. At the meeting, the Committee continued to review policies in the 800 series. Policies on the agenda this month were 800 Records Management and Policy 801 Public Records. These policies are on tonight's agenda for a fast reading. The next meeting of the Policy Committee will be on September 13th, 2022 at 5:00 PM in a virtual format.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Next committee report will be Facilities and Operations. Mrs. Wesley, please.
Thank you, President Stoll. The Facilities and Operations Committee met on Monday, July 25th in a virtual format. The Committee reviewed the following items to be moved to this evening's action meeting for the Board consideration. There was one change order for the Nap Elementary School project. There is a change order for the fire alarm replacement and upgrade project, and the award of the Healthcare Center site work contracts. The Committee was also presented and discussed informational items, including the update on the Nap Elementary Project update. The next Facilities and Operations meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 29th at 7:00 PM in a virtual format, and I'd like to add that North Penn's and Act Club will be presenting their, their information ideas on how to move forward in a more energy-efficient, environmentally responsible manner as we move forward with construction projects. So, please tune in for that, we're looking forward to it. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. The next up is the North Monco Technical Career Center. Is that Dr.?
Thank you, Madam President. The regular meeting of the North Monco Joint Operating Committee was held virtually on Monday, August 13th at 7:00 PM, virtually. The JOC approved several personnel appointments and resignations, the purchase of new textbooks, student travel requests, staff travel requests, the revised health and safety plan, and a catering event. The JOC also discussed ways and plans to increase enrollment. The plan is to go to examine every program to make sure it operates efficiently and in the best interest of the students. We are going to continue to look for new programs in growing fields, and I'm happy to say that Mr. Rush is representing us on that committee. The next JOC meeting will be held virtually on Monday, September 19th at 7:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis Campbell. The next report is the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Mr. Fusco will be reading that report this evening.
Highlights from the June 22nd, 2022 Board Meeting. Brandon Langer, Program Administrator, Instructional Technology, and Kristi Ruth, Program Supervisor of Montgomery Virtual Program, both from the Office of Professional Learning, presented an overview of student-centered learning with the Montgomery Virtual Program. The results of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board Annual Election were announced, and the MCIU Board will seat the following Board members for terms effective July 1st, 2022. And in advance, I apologize for any of those who may be listening whose names I'm about to butcher. Brian Allen from Abington, Jennifer Cannon from Lower Moreland Township, Greg Delia from Upper Moreland, Janet Flee Sac from Sauterston, Amy Hubley from Springfield Township, Rowan Keenan from Perkeomen Valley, Susan Lawrence from Pottstown, Gary Levador from Upper Marion, Jennifer Lowman from Sheltonham Township, Sharon Marino from Colonial, Melanie Schaafmeister from Lower Marion, and Margaret Wright from Springford Area School District. The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board elected the following MCIU Board Officers for the 2022-23 year. Board President, our own Julianne Ramich, Board Vice President, Sharon Mock, Board Treasurer, Judith McGinnis, Board Secretary, Jennifer Wilson from Haverhorsen. The MCIU Board appointed Board President Julianne Ramich to serve as the PSBA Voting Delegate to the PSBA 22-23 Delegate Assembly on November 5th, 2022. An executive director update. Dr. Speaker thanked Michael Berardi, MCIU Board Representative from Lower Moreland Township, for his dedicated service to the MCIU Board of Directors. Dr. Speaker shared that the MCIU opening day for 22-23 is scheduled for Monday, August 22nd, 2022, at 8:30 AM at North Penn High School. All MCIU Board members are invited to attend as their schedules allow. The MCIU Board approved the calendar for Intermediate Unit Board Meetings for the 22-23 school year. The MCIU Board approved the following budget items for 22-23. Office of Professional Learning, Office of Technology, PRI, Private Rehabilitative Institutions, Access Administrative Time Study, IDEA, 611 School Age Special Education, and Summer Food Service Program. The MCIU Board approved the following budget items for 21-22. Statewide System of Support STEM, State and Federal Funds, statewide system of support data governance, statewide system of support ATSI federal funds, statewide system of support accelerated learning, statewide system of support accelerated learning school districts, and a budget revision for the 21-22 Act 89 non-public schools. Human Resources Update. Nine new employees, two retirements, 19 resignations, and seven temporary hires for the Monco Works Now program. The MCIU Board approved a regional partner contract agreement between the MCI, between the MCIU and Code.org to provide professional development during the 22-23 school year. The Office of Student Services will be opening two new specialized life skills support classrooms with a focus on transition and behavioral support at Colonial Middle School and Upper Dublin High School. The Office of Student Services will be expanding their MDS classrooms and opening new classrooms at Thomas Fitzwater Elementary School in Upper Dublin School District and Pendale Middle School in North Penn School District. The MCIU Board approved continuations of contracted technology service agreements to support school districts for the 22-23 school year. The MCIU Board approved a number of contracted service agreements to support its many trainings, programs, and services provided by the offices of the MCIU. Wednesday, August 14th, 2022 will be the next meeting, going to be held at 6:45 PM. End of report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Next up is the North Penn Educational Foundation. The foundation has been busy this month with its Build-A-Bag Backpack Drive, and assembled and distributed hundreds of filled backpacks to our schools earlier today. We are extremely grateful for the individuals, businesses, and groups who donated to this wonderful cause, to the volunteers who helped put everything together, and to Virginia Higgins from the Office of School and Community Engagement for coordinating it all. We received more donations this year than ever before. Up next, we will have our 21st Annual Golf Classic being held on Tuesday, October 11th, at Talmore Country Club. We are looking for players, sponsors, and volunteers for this popular, popular event, which fills up quickly. We would also like to thank the Independence Blue Cross, who is our first premier sponsor of the year. Trustees are looking forward to the start of the school year and helping North Penn teachers put into action all the grants approved this spring. To learn more about all the things foundation-related, please visit NPennFoundation.org or contact Christine Liberowski at the ESC. End of report. Next up is the Legislative Committee Report. Mr. McCain, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Pennsylvania House and Senate are in summer recess and will reconvene in mid-September. This year, members of our community are invited, as always, to take part in the democratic process to determine who will represent us in the future. Please take time to consider each of the candidates ahead of Election Day in November. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Next up is Solicitor's Report. I don't know, do you have?
Thank you, Madam President. There's only one item to report this evening, and that is, an executive session was held and attended by the Board of Directors along with counsel on August 9th. It was a virtual session, and it was in regard to the matter docketed in the federal district court of the Eastern District of Pennsylvania entitled Bennett versus the North Penn School District.
Thank you, Mr. Burletta. Next up is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Bauer, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I recommend the items listed on the consent agenda, namely, adoption of policies, repeal of policies, adoption of policies for a first read, notice of intent to repeal policies, student travel, contracts, building rental fee waiver, approval to advertise for bid, future MPSD residence tuition-free, student agreements, alternative placements, and lastly, 2022-23 Chromebooks and desktops bid.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions?
Yes, Madam President. So, the policy for the therapy dogs, that's, that's something that I know that I've discussed at Facilities and Operations, and I'm really happy and pleased that it's moved forward to this point. So, thank you so much to the Administration and to Mr. Durr.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Are there any other comments or questions?
Just a quick question about the seesaw purchase. Will that, does that mean that it will, I'm sorry, not seesaw, smore, the smore purchase? Does that mean it will be more widely, is the purpose of that so it can be more widely used across the district in terms of communication for principals to have access to the pro level?
Yes, and it's more like consortium pricing. So, we had each individual school, not each, but most of our schools were purchasing a license, and now we purchased a district license, so it can be more widespread, can be used by clubs, could be used by central office, so yes.
Okay, great, thank you. It's nice to see that, I think we saw that that was really useful at ECI, as people were presenting, that many were using that. And if people aren't familiar with it, smore does, it's a new, a software in which you can utilize it for newsletters and communication, and also translates into, I think, over 100 different languages or something like that. So, thank you for, for supporting our principals and teachers and others that may use that.
Thank you, Dr. G.
Thank you, Dr. G. Are there any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I recommend the approval of the Personnel items as per the attached.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
Just a quick question, well, not so much a question, on the substitute rates. Will those rates, as you have looked at them, allow us to be competitive and be able to ensure that we're able to bring in the substitutes that we need in the teacher shortage to support us throughout the year and cover our classes?
You know what, I'm pretty confident in that. Based on last year's data compared to our colleagues across the county, our rates have been much higher. Not just the substitute rates, but also the fill rates have been higher. And I know there's been conversations with my colleagues across the county as well, what's, you know, basically trying to get a sense from each other. What are your rates, you know, what are you going to do? And so honestly, we are still one of the highest ones. The only difference between last year's and upcoming school year substitute rates is that, you know, the bonus, we won't be having that in place. But otherwise, it's still 180, 190, and $200 for the certificated, and then 170, 180, 190 for the guest teachers, their tier programs.
Thank you.
Objection?
Thank you, Dr. G. Thank you, Dr. Kim. Mr. Barletta?
Ask for a solicitor.
Can you? I just.
Mr. Lanier, this isn't public comment right now.
It doesn't matter, I'm allowed to object at any time there's violation.
You can, you can, you can make your objection noted for the record.
Let him say it and note it.
I just said you can make your objection for the record, it'll be noted, and then we're going to move on.
My objection is they showed the vote, nine, nothing, there's not nine.
Mrs. Ramich is participating over the phone.
They usually announce it.
Mr. Barletta did announce it.
It was announced, Mr. Lanier.
You can reuse the video when you are done tonight.
No worries.
Okay, so. Sorry, where are we at? Did I?
Thank you, Dr. Kim. I, Dr. Kim had answered my question.
So there is a motion on the floor.
Correct.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I recommend the approval of Change Order 23 to Lowbar Incorporated in the amount of $0 for miscellaneous changes during construction by having a contractual change made to apply the Unit Cost Allowance 24 to this change order.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I recommend the approval of Deduct Change Order 2 to Electrotech Incorporated in the amount of $6,238.99 for the reimbursement of the remaining allowances in their contract.
Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the rejection and rebid of the general construction bid for the Healthcare Center for Site Work and Utilities Project.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
Madam President, I have one clarification. So I understand why the general construction contract, we're going to reject and rebid. But what happens to the three electrical construction bids? Do they just wait, or is that, that's not being rebid, correct?
Go ahead, Chris. Go ahead.
Yeah, they aren't going to be rejected or awarded at this time. We're going to hold them until we get the rebids back for the general construction bid. So we're going to hold them and consider them once we have the other part of the bid done.
Okay. Do they agree to hold their pricing, though, for this bid?
I'm not sure what the exact language is in the bid, Ms. Wesley, I apologize, but traditionally, we have something in there to say it's held for a certain amount of time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I recommend the approval of the Fall 2022/Winter 2023 Community Education Program Classes and Fees as Attached.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions?
I do have one comment. I would, I'm proud to share that we have English for Everyday Adults. Again, that was award-winning program last year, put on by our Communications Department and Mrs. Early, and really excited to have that again this year.
I just have one quick comment. Just kind of nice to see the variety back, right? As I'm kind of, you're just looking through the variety of classes. So I hope that folks will look at what's offered and start to take advantage of these classes again as we kind of get back to normal. It's just nice to see, I'll be taking Bentley to the dog obedience school.
I do think we've seen some dogs in virtual school board meetings that could join us on Dog Obedience Class. That class is listed here specifically for Mr. Scracky and for the dogs.
You're not referring to my dogs, I hope. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Schwartz Dalton Real Estate LLC concerning the property located at 430 Stump Road, Montgomery Township, be approved as presented, and that the Board President be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be increased from $921,510 to $1,104,310.
Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McCain. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Schwartz Dalton Real Estate LLC concerning the property located at 436 Stump Road, Montgomery Township, be approved as presented, and that the Board President be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel, excuse me, shall be increased from $1,349,840 to $1,622,390.
Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's it for me. Thank you, President Stoll.
Thank you, Superintendent Bauer. All right, next up, we will have the Finance Report, and we have Kristen here tonight to do the report. So, thank you, Madam President. We do have a couple quick updates that we would like to discuss. First off, if you're a property owner in the North Penn School District, just a reminder that the 2% discount period for the real estate tax bills ends October 31st. So please keep that date in mind as we're approaching that payment date. If you are a property owner of the District and have not received your tax bill, please contact your elected tax collector immediately. Next, the Pennsylvania Department of the Auditor General's Performance Audit is now complete, and a draft report is currently under development and review. As a reminder, North Penn and 11 other school districts were part of this audit, and the report is being developed in a comprehensive manner where all 12 districts will be reported together. The Business Office has been and is continuing to prepare for the annual independent local audit, which is scheduled to start in September. Next, for anyone in the audience that has family and friends eligible for the P A Property Tax Rebate Program, we wanted to remind you and them that the North Penn School District is in its fifth year of our own program that piggybacks the state program. So if you know anyone who is eligible for the state program, they may be eligible for the North Penn program and should apply. We match the state's program by 75%. We've had several individuals in the past years who've had 100% of their property taxes refunded to them through the state program and our own. The average rebate for the 21-22 School Year was $264 over 544 applicants, and for 22-23, the rebates are averaging $361 so far over 164 applicants. We do think this is an excellent program that helps the North Penn community, and we encourage anybody who thinks they may be eligible to apply. The rebate program will be discussed at the September Finance Committee Meeting to discuss the increased rates at the state level for 22-23. Finally, Pennsylvania State Senator Lindsey Williams, the Minority Chair for the Senate Education Committee, announced today that she will introduce legislation that will provide free meals to all students. At the beginning of the pandemic, the federal government took action to ensure that all students had access to free breakfast and lunch. However, access to universal school meals is set to expire at the beginning of the 22-23 School Year, which is right around the corner for the Commonwealth students and families. While the federal government has taken some steps to help schools facing rising food, gas, and labor costs, unfortunately, nothing has been done yet to help Pennsylvania students and families enduring the same financial strain. We certainly support the proposed legislation. Just a reminder that breakfast will be free for all students of the North Penn School District for 22-23 School Year, regardless of the outcome of this proposal. Furthermore, students who previously qualified for reduced meal prices will be able to obtain meals for free for lunch as well. These two initiatives are being funded by this District School Nutrition Services Program and Fund. In terms of the Treasurer's Report for the month of July, 2022, we had cash receipts totaling $23.6 million, cash dispersments totaling $23.9 million. Available funds at the end of July were $70.9 million, which is about $800,000 less than last year at this time. Madam President, I ask for the approval of the Treasury Reports for July. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Rush. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, and I just want to make sure I didn't misspeak. The discount period ends September 31st, okay? In case I misspoke, September 31st, 30th. Right? Yeah. I'm sorry?
30th.
30th. I'm sorry, am I saying that wrong?
You're okay, there's only 30 days in September, not 31.
I said it wrong, it's August 31st.
There you go.
Clarify.
You said at the.
August 31st.
Kristen, you said at the start of school. You did a nice job.
August 31st is the end of the discount.
No problem, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the sanction approval of invoices. I recommend ratification of the dispersments for the month of July in the amount of $27,914.15. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is that Dr. G? Okay, motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Dr. G. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then finally, for informational purposes, all the monthly financial reports are posted in Board Docs, and we do review them in detail at the Finance Committee Meetings. Thank you very much, Mrs. Johnson. Okay, next up, we will be moving on to other business. We have an update on the 2022-2023 Health and Safety Plan.
Yes, thank you, President Stoll, and I am very pleased to share with the Board and the community this evening that our, as noted in the agenda, that Section 2001 I, Part One of the American Rescue Plan Act, requires that each local agency that receives funding under the A R P Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, also known as E S R, to develop and make it publicly available on the L E A's website. This plan must be reviewed every six months. So the last time the Health and Safety Plan came before the Board was in February. It is now August, six months later, and just before the start of a new school year. Many people do know that there was some guidance that came out from the CDC just last week. We had a meeting with Montgomery County Office of Public Health this afternoon, and I am so thrilled and happy to share with you the quote from the Office of Public Health, "It is time to get back to normal." So, all the mitigation measures that we heard in the past in terms of quarantine and assurance testing and test-to-stay and mask-to-stay are no longer recommended as mitigation strategies unless you are in an outbreak, which is defined as 10% of your population. We have not been close to 10% of our population in our schools. So they are requiring isolation for positive cases, right? But no quarantine or contact tracing all the time and effort that contact tracing required of our staff, and in particular, Dr. Kim and our building principals, those measures are no longer recommended due to the changes in the actual virus, the availability of testing, and the amount of severe disease significantly decreasing. They actually said on the call today that the most significant symptom of the most recent strand, or most prominent symptom, is a sore throat. So just very pleased that this COVID-19 is no longer as severe as it was, and that our students can come to school, and we don't need to contact trace. Students are welcome to wear masks, but at this time, they are not required. And I'm simply presenting this document before you this evening for review, not for vote. It does say in there that if there are substantive changes to the recommendations from the CDC and the Office of Public Health, that the plan would come before you again. So if, let's hope not, but if the guidance changed dramatically in the coming months, we would bring it before this Board, whether it be an emergency meeting or a regularly scheduled action meeting or work session. So very pleased that our students and their families will have the option of wearing masks or not in the fall.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. That is good news. Can you just clarify, when you say 10% of the population, do you mean per school or in the entire district?
Yeah, it's per school. It could be, and it could be as granular as a classroom. So it does say, their guidance does say that if we are approaching an outbreak in a classroom or a school, we are to contact them. So we would then talk to the Office of Public Health, is it a linked cases, or does it just so happen that, say, you have a classroom of 28 kids and three kids test positive? Are they linked, or do they just happen to be in the same classroom? And then they would offer guidance. And at that point, it would be guidance, not requirements. So very, very happy that the guidance from the healthcare professionals has, it has, I guess, what am I looking for here? The severity of the mitigation measures has decreased significantly. So just thrilled about that.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I have a question. I'm just curious, can you explain what isolation looks like?
Yes, so, great question, Mr. Fusco. They defined it clearly today. Quarantine is for those who have been exposed. Isolation is for those who have tested positive. So isolation means you are to remain home for five days, and then when you return, this is after testing positive, when you return back to school, you are to wear a mask till day 10. Okay? So isolation is for positive cases. That still exists. If you have COVID-19, you cannot come to school. But if you are a close contact, you are no longer required to quarantine. They are still recommending if you start to exhibit symptoms and you know you've been exposed, you should get tested. And if you are then positive, you have to isolate. Thank you for that question, Mr. Fusco.
Just one quick follow-up question, oh, sorry. Regarding, you know, you're going to have those isolated cases where that's going to occur. So are we just, you know, working with our teachers so that they kind of know how they have to handle, you know, what they need to do to handle that, you know, in terms of flexibility and that kind of thing? We're not requiring them to teach virtually, though, right?
We are not.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're going to treat this like any other respiratory disease or illness at this point. So if a student is sick, they're home, and they're sick, and they can make up their work when they're well.
Great.
There's no streaming component either? There is not streaming due to COVID-19 isolation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, then we will move on to the Director of Human Resources Report. Dr. Kim, please.
Good evening, Madam President and Board of School Directors. So I believe this is one of those rare times where, you know, a Director of Human Resources gets to share a report. So with the new school year just a few weeks away, everyone is really looking forward to starting, you know, another exciting year. And some of you, as well as our community members, have heard the news that has been heard across the nation, that school districts, like many industries, are experiencing staffing shortage. For school districts, the challenges are filling teaching positions as well as support staff positions for the new school year, where in. staff positions for the new school year, where in everyone that works in the school district play a pivotal role in making sure our students are learning. I will share that even the Pennsylvania Department of Education is feeling the challenges of teaching shortage. And before I share our school district's data, I want to take a moment to share the data from the Department of Education to frame the context of at least the challenges of filling teaching positions within the Commonwealth. According to the Pennsylvania Department of Education data, the most recent data, bear in mind, is from 2019-20 school year. And we'll also note that the spring of 2020 is when the pandemic actually began. So during that year, a total of 6,927 teaching certificates were issued. And the year before, the PDE issued 7,729 teaching certificates. So in a year, the number of certificates that were issued decreased by approximately 9%. Now, even more concerning data is that four years earlier, from 2019-2016 school year to 2019-20 school year, there was approximately 40% decrease in the number of teaching certificates that were issued. As you can imagine, the pandemic has certainly not helped the matter. So that said, recently, the Pennsylvania Department of Education has drafted a series of goals to help enhance their certification process, to help the districts and educational institutions employ certificated teachers, as well as assist others in providing alternative pathways to obtaining teaching certificates, which is wonderful news, especially in light of a teaching shortage. As for our district data, my staff and I, we actually went back to January of 2022 and reviewed the data of employees whose resignation and retirements are needed for the upcoming 2223 school year. For professionals, that certainly includes teachers, but also other professionals such as school psychologists and instructional coaches, we received 64 resignations and retirements as of August 17th of 2022. And I will say, several of them were received within about past two weeks. And I will say, I even received one this morning. And for us to start this new school year, again, to start the new school year at the elementary level, we have one position to fill. So I do want to note that with the last-minute resignations, as per the school code, we can hold the teachers for up to 60 calendar days. And certainly, we will release them as soon as their replacements are able to start. But that is somewhat of a provision that's in place to help the school districts where they're losing teachers. At the secondary level, we have 13 positions to fill to start the school year, with three positions in world language, and one is in Japanese. So, in fact, there has not been a Japanese teaching certificate that has been issued by the state. So, it's a bit of a challenge. So we are working with a candidate that is looking to obtain an emergency certificate. So we're in the works of that. And we also have, of the 13, 10 positions are in Special Education Department, including school psychologists. We do have a number of school psychologists that have resigned. And please know that we have interviews throughout the summer. And unfortunately, some of the job offers we have made where the candidate has accepted, and due to personal reasons, were not able to accept, so that we have to repost. So it is, you know, sort of like a Groundhog Day in a way. We have to redo the thing. I also want to note that while we cannot operate without teachers, the reality is that we also cannot operate without our support staff. They play just as an important role in providing meaningful educational experiences to our students. That said, the vacancies in our support staff are as follows in extended school care. All positions where due to resignations and retirements have been filled. However, as you know, with more, you know, as we have students enrolling in those programs, we just need to make sure that we have ample staff. So speaking with the coordinator of extended school care, she's hoping to hire three more staff so that they are ready, fully ready. And we have three and a half, we're in need of three and a half bus drivers, and one van driver, and one bus assistant to start the year. And we are in need of one staff nurse and 14 special education assistants. And most of the special education assistance resignations have been received within the past two weeks. So, the key question becomes, well, what are you doing, right? So we have many, we have many interviews scheduled throughout, you know, as we have for the past few weeks and throughout all next week. That means early in the morning, all day, and into evenings. And this is a crunch time for HR in particular, and for administrators in particular, because it's almost like 24/7 to get ready. And we want to make sure that our students have the best first day of experience ever. So we are reaching out to various organizations to recruit, including some of the contact information that we have received, including some outside agencies that one may not have considered, like Global Network and so forth. And we're also, so, any community members listening, if you are interested, whether it be full-time or part-time positions, please visit North Penn website under Employment Opportunities. And administration and HR staff are committed to fulfilling the vacancies to support our students' learning for the new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. I know you and your department have been working tirelessly to fill all the positions, so thank you for that. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I do. First, I'd like to congratulate you for doing such a phenomenal job of making sure that we are addressing those needs. There's, in addition to the drop in certifications, at least nationally, there's been a trend as well of teachers leaving the profession at a higher clip. First, I'm wondering, have we had a similar experience here at North Penn with accelerated teacher retirements over the past two, four years, as you were describing?
You know, I did not see a significant increase in retirement as I'd anticipated, and I say that, like, but however, I have seen notice of resignations. And I do ask, you know, what's the cause? And, you know, I've had some teachers who have said, you know what, it's been a very tough year, and I've decided, I've got young children, I'd rather stay home. And, you know, they're revisiting their finance, financial situations to see if they can make their work, but they always say, like, I do plan on coming back, I don't want you to forget about me. So which is a wonderful thing. But I think, I do think that is a residual effect of the pandemic. I think people have been really tired.
Do you know of any research that's being done into that trend, either at the state level or national level? I ask as an educator, while I think it's obviously important to bring people into the profession, I think it's equally important to try to maintain the professionals that we have and try to get a handle on, you know, what it is that is leading to this exodus.
I do think there is a significant studies being devoted to mental health. And I think mental health is such a, in a broad umbrella, but I do think it delves into, you know, what's causing the stress, and what are we doing to help manage that? I will tell you, you know, if you, like therapists and psychologists and psychiatrists, while they provide mental health support to their clients, they themselves see, you know, their own therapist, because they need to be able to manage that. And, you know, I want to make sure that our school counselors that are providing the services, I want to be able to reach out and work with them as well to make sure that their needs are being met as well.
Just as a note, I find it interesting that the professional class of legislators like to talk about mental health, but so rarely do we see anything from a policy or legislative support for folks. So I would just continue to urge our legislators to look at this and pay attention to that trend of teachers leaving and that need. You know, we all, as a society, need greater access to mental health support, and teachers are certainly not immune to that as well. Thank you, Dr. Kim.
Not a problem. If I may, I think one of the important things is, you know, we all talk about our plate being full, you know, what can we take off? But I also think, you know, while we want to manage that, I think it's also important to help our staff learn to build stamina, right? We all are going to find ourselves in a situation that there's not, there aren't things that we might be able to take off the plate at that moment in time. And hope that that's a moment in time, what can we do to support them so that they are able to, like, you know what, this is just a moment in time, let me just, this too shall pass. I think that's an important piece.
Well said. Well said.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. Mr. Rush, go ahead.
I thought baby boomers retiring would be a big issue with teachers at this point in time, but you're not seeing that that's a trend?
Not so much. Believe it or not, actually, thank goodness, at least for, Mr. Fusco talked about, what is the legislation doing? Well, PDE has provided one more extension so that the retired teachers and bus drivers can come back and work. So, knock on wood, fortunately, I do have a French teacher that just retired, and he's coming back and is studying for semester. So, you know, I do think when they retire, they're still looking to do something. I think fortunately, you know, when they're well, physically well and mentally well, and enjoy being with children, and they have the control, I can come back when I want to come back and choose not to work. So they're coming back, so I haven't seen a huge drop, and let's keep it that way. It's my hope.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to other business. Does anyone have any other business this evening? Okay, I just would like to, you know, wish everyone a great start to the new school year. You know, acknowledge that the last two years have been very difficult for everyone, and I sincerely hope that this year will be a much better year. I'm glad to hear of all the things that we're doing to make sure that we're fully staffed and, you know, I just want to, and I'm glad to hear about the protocols and the updated Health and Safety Plan. And I'm hopeful everything just goes well this year. And I know that we might have some dark days, maybe COVID kicks up again. If it does, I hope that we just, you know, remember to show each other some grace and give each other, you know, a little bit of, you know, benefit of the doubt or whatever, just help people out when they need it, so. But hopefully, it'll all be good, and we'll have a great year, and I certainly hope that we have a very happy start to the new year next year, next week, so. Is there anyone else that would like to say anything? No? Okay. Then we'll go on to our second audience of citizens. The same rules apply. If anyone wants to come up and speak, now would be your time.
The first class graduated from this building in 1972. Are these seats the original seats?
I don't think that they are. I think they're second round.
Okay, I'm just, I forget how uncomfortable they were. You know, I wanted to say something about respect, and also about the issue of you're not responding to us when we come up to the podium. The Sunshine Act does state that you don't have to, but it actually behooves you to answer a question now and again, because that way it shows us that you are listening and that you do have an opinion and can answer it for us. I do have, I do have respect for Dr. Bauer. He did tell me I could call him Todd, but, you know, in public, I will call him Dr. Bauer because he deserves my respect. So when you earn my respect, that's when you get my respect. I'm a lot older than all of you, and it's not going to be that I'm just going to respect you because you happen to be on a school board. You know, I'm watching you, and I'm listening to you, and I don't think you're acting in a very professional way. So, and when you turn off the mic or you shout me down, actually, Pencebury School Board was sued, and they, and the parents won, because they were doing exactly that to parents when they were coming up to the podium. You know, it's against the Constitution to shut people down just because you don't like what they're saying. So I just wanted to tell you that, that, you know, you can earn my respect, because I'm not, I don't want to be that kind of person that will never respect you. I just want to see that you're going to be responsive, and I would like an answer about what I wrote to you, you know, and so does Mr. Lanier. You know, we are actually asking in concern for students who are going into that library, just because, you know, students can go get porn anywhere, perhaps, but you don't have to make it available to them in the schools. And that's basically what we're saying. And we don't understand why you want to fight to keep it there. That's not reasonable or logical. So, you know, that's really all I want to say. So I was less than three minutes, so you should be happy. Thank you.
Mrs. Stoll, with the additional 40 seconds, I will share that the seats are original.
Are they?
The ceiling was replaced in 1989, and the carpet was replaced in 2013. And this all comes from the North Penn High School historian, Mr. Robert Gilmer.
So they are original?
They are.
They do squeak a lot. And Mrs. Brachio, I think we're the same age, so. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? What's that?
I'm way older than you.
I doubt it. Mrs. LeBlanc?
Hello.
How you doing?
Hi. Erin Blanc of Hatfield. And I just jotted down some notes, and I wanted some better clarification about the Health and Safety Plan. Can you expand on the actual reason that we're still doing it if we're saying things are back to normal? And I know this document, like, it's dated for last summer, July of '21. But the other question I have, and Dr. Bauer, maybe you could, are you going to send out, like, an email? Okay, I was hoping so, because this chart, it says, like, refer to this, refer to that, and it's a lot of, like, digging around to find actual, you know, Montgomery County policies. But you did say, or did I hear incorrectly, that, so if someone says they have COVID, they have to stay home for five days, and then when they come back, they wear a mask for five days? Because to me, that's not normal. That's just, you know, my take on it, to send my kid back to school with a mask then. So it would either be a choice of staying out of school for possibly 10 days with no access to schooling, or wear a mask for five days. So, I felt the joy in your voice when you said all that. I almost had tears, but then, to me, it's actually not norm, you know, it's not the normal that we're used to. So I wanted to clarify that. And then you said no streaming, so I wrote that down. I also wanted to ask if we could get an update on the hiring of a replacement for Mr. Dur. I feel that his position is probably one of the most important in the whole district, not to, you know, disqualify anyone else's importance, but I think that going back to school in the forefront of families' minds is safety. And unfortunately, some of the kids have caught wind of different, you know, incidents, and they want to be reassured, too. So I would just love to know where we are in the process, if you can discuss, and assure us that we are on our way to having someone by the time he leaves, and someone that's, you know, extremely qualified. And then, I did have a question about, like, when someone's voting on the phone, sometimes I don't hear it. I started to hear it after Mr. Lanier brought it up, but do they normally actually vote, like, verbally? Sometimes I space out, but do they normally, like, make sure that we hear them? Because that would be helpful, too, so that we're not confused. I didn't notice that before he brought it up. And then the other thing about the actual Health and Safety Plan is the cleaning. So I didn't think that COVID was on surfaces, but it says we're still, like, deep cleaning and such. Is that the case, too, also? Like, I know we're, like, low on staff resources and things like that. Maybe you could answer that later. That's all. But yes, Dr. Bauer, if you send out, like, a message to all the parents, because I know they're going to be asking since Health and Safety Plan was brought up, that would be helpful, that you would go into further detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LeBlanc. Or Dr. Bauer, if you want to answer some of her questions--
Sure. I'm happy to respond to some of those things, and Mrs. Blanc, if I don't cover anything, feel free to give me a call. First, cleaning protocols will-- First, cleaning protocols will remain the same. Hopefully, our staffing issues, as described by Dr. Kim, will be better this year. The Montgomery County Office of Public Health did share today that they will update their website as early as Monday. So it's supposed to be early next week. They said, do not reference the website right now because it is not in accordance with the most recent guidance, so they have to pull a lot of that off of there. And then there was a question about the process for replacing Mr. Durr, who has gotten more airtime recently than any of us. And Mr. Durr's replacement, we interviewed first round, there were screening interviews this week. We had over 30 applicants. That pool has, was dwindled to 15 and now I believe it is in single digits. That round will be this week and the final round the following. So yes, Mrs. Blanque asked, or said, I'm hopeful you're well on your way. We are. And there's, Mr. Durr is still going to be local and is committed to helping us with transition, because certainly he, more than anyone other than Mr. Casa perhaps, knows how important school safety is. So he'll be available to us. And if that means he leaves a couple days early so we can bring him back to help the transition when the person gets here, he will do that.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer.
My pleasure.
And thank you, Mrs. LeBlanc, for bringing it up. Mr. Casa, did you? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Lanier.
Jason Lanier Lansale. First, quick, real quickly, and luckily, there's solicitor here. I apologize, I forgot your name. Section 610 of the school code talks about use of illegal, or I should say, use of school funds illegal. And in the last sentence, it says, "Any matter or for any purpose not provided in this act shall be illegal." I want to know if the health clinic is in, anything about a health clinic is in the school code? And if it is not, under what order are you, or what authority are you allowed to do this? So I'll sit in, if you could respond to that, I would appreciate it. In general, I've spoken to a number of teachers and they tell me something pretty universal about what's frustrating them is the lack of discipline in the classroom. Not that they can't discipline the kids, it's that the kids, if they are acting out, aren't taken to the principal's office. Is this a fallout from the Equity Program? I don't know. What is causing, allowing this, permitting such behavior to happen? Mr. Durr's report actually showed that this was, there's, the number of kids in grade school who are getting in trouble is ballooned huge, right? I'm wondering if teachers are feeling frustrated by this. And I wonder if teachers are also feeling frustrated by sort of the politicalization of their teaching profession. I mean, this board right here has a number of members who are on the NEA. And I don't think all teachers believe everything the NEA says, but I think this board takes it hook, line and sinker. And what they want to do doesn't necessarily meet up with what's best for kids. So I wonder, does this school board have, how many school board members up here have committee positions in some, in a borough or township or the county? It's four or five of you, correct? And how many of wives work, or spouses, I should say, work for a township or borough? And these have all happened since you've been elected board members. So are you using these positions to help relatives out? I mean, it would be obvious if, Miss Stoll, you were selling insurance to the school district, that would be not permitted, right? I mean, your insurance company wouldn't, wouldn't allow that. Or the school wouldn't allow that. It would be an ethics violation. But allowing, using it for political purposes is okay? Like, when you guys had the rally for Madeline Dean and used the school property without paying anything, use the school facilities on a Saturday where your rules and regulations strictly prohibit it?
No, they don't.
Shaking your head, no. They don't prohibit it? Do you want me to read the school policy to you? It's?
Oh, time's up.
Yeah.
Yep. Your time is up, Mr. Lanier. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
No.
That's not how it works, Mr. Krainy Monticelli. Okay.
Mr. Lanier. The time is up, sir. The time is up, sir.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, move.
Second. Thank you.